And welcome to our Halloween edition to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Tonight, being prayer and pledge, most serious business we got, we're gonna let the only one dressed seriously up here tonight deliver that for us. So I've asked Eric Musgrove to open us with the invocation and the pledge.
I feel like I need to do a special prayer. There's some of these guys up here, but let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we come to you today to thank you for your wonderful blessings you've given to us, for the sacrifice your son did for us. We ask that you be with those of our first responders, those in the military, that you'll watch over them, guide them as they protect and serve our country. We ask that you will be the leader of our nation, the nations around us. Pray that we live in peace with one another. We ask tonight, Father, blessings upon our local citizens, those who are suffering, those who may be dealing with struggles, whether it's illness or whatever it may be, pray that you'll be with them. Father, we ask that you'll be with these commissioners tonight as they make decisions which will bring honor and glory to your name. Through your Son's name, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're gonna deviate from our regular scheduled program just a little bit. Tonight, we have Arka, North Florida, with some of the staff and some of the clients here. They were just awarded the Chamber Nonprofit Business of the Year. So, a little bit of recognition for them, and to celebrate Halloween, we asked them to come in and help us celebrate. So, what we're gonna do is ask the clients and the staff to come up for a picture with the board. We've got a little bit of candy for y'all. They don't have bags, so we'll give them a piece of, one candy bar apiece, and then y'all can take the rest with you. So if y'all would come on up.
I like your hat. That's a good one. Good deal. I'm doing fine, thank you. Oh my goodness. Did I mess you up?
Not at all, sir. I always shoot people when I get them right. Did you see those cosmic pictures?
I haven't.
You're in your system.
You act the biggest.
Minutes, October 1st, 2019, regular scheduled board meeting. Any changes, corrections? Anything you want to add? Take away?
Couldn't hear you.
I didn't hear what you said.
He says he couldn't hear you.
Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Consent agenda, we have two through 12. Any items wishing to be pulled for discussion? Here none, though have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Doc Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, it is after 6:05, so we'll go on to our time specific. At 6:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution, special permit for a temporary use request, number SPTU 190901, by Harriet Wells and John Wells, to be granted a special permit for temporary use under section 1410, Swanee County Land Development Regulations for a five-day earth skill educational gathering on property zone hag. Anyone wishing to speak or give testimony, if they would stand now and be sworn in?
Just stand where you are, we'll be fine for the moment. All right, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you each swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you God?
I do.
All right, thank you. When you do approach the podium, please state your name and address. Thank you.
All right, this time, we'll turn our attention to Ron Meeks, zoning director.
Mr. Chairman, board members, some of you may remember, last year, we did a temporary use approval for the same group to hold a five-day earth skills gathering event. From that event last year, we really heard nothing but positive feedback from that, seemed to be well attended, and not aware of any issues that happened during that event. So they are before you tonight, requesting, this will be the second year they would be holding this event. It's scheduled for 2020. It would be in the month of February, being February 5th through the 9th. The special permit for temporary use is being requested by the property owners, which is Ms. Harriet Wells and John Wells. The location of the property is off of 228th Street, which is in O'Brien. The site?
32344. So, happy Halloween. I didn't bring my costume. This will be our 10th year for the Florida Earth Skills Gathering, and it will be our second year in beautiful Swanee County. The only issue we had to work out was traffic through the neighborhood. So we have people going down 129, over 349, down 101, and back up 228, which is the road on your map. That keeps them out of the neighborhood, away from the church congestion of O'Brien. And we did not hear anything but positive reviews, as y'all said. We are capping it at 450 people. It's very small. It is largely families, lots of children. This is a drug and alcohol-free event, and there was camping and classes every day, two class slots every day. We had almost 50 instructors from all over the southeast and the rest of the country. Really great, top-notch people. Y'all may have seen the survival shows on TV. Well, that's TV. These are the real people. So if y'all want to learn, come on down. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for him?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
You said 450 is where you capping it this year? How many did you have last year?
We were just under that.
Just under that, okay. Good.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
For the sheriff, real quick. Quiet last year with anything? I mean, I didn't hear anything.
Yeah, we, one thing I talked to him the other day about is that, you know, we're gonna work with them, you know, because I think the focus is on them. And so what we're gonna do is just see what the peak time is, you know, and we have a couple of questions asked last year, no problems, but we're gonna work with them this year because it's too national, I don't know, we're working for a hundred and twenty, and that's scary out there.
Thank you.
Good.
No, I'm, I'm in 100% support of it. I think it's great. I mean, an environment where there's no cell phones and kids can learn something, and adults too. Just, we need more of it. Appreciate you.
I brought some things to represent the classes we teach, y'all'd like to see.
Sure.
This is a deer hide. It's tanned using a bark solution, same method, probably now. Very nice.
Tree bark is what you said?
Yes.
Yeah.
O-dro, fire kit.
Your heads up, so. And if you need additional details, Mr. Harris, I can provide you that as well.
Okay, thank you. Is it easier to get a trail than it is to get a sidewalk?
Well, luckily.
Because we might build a concrete trail to that school that we need down there. I know how difficult that safe route.
Well, they're both, they're both funding mechanisms. The advantage we have with the TA program, which can do trails or sidewalks, is it's controlled by the district, you know, here within the region. The Safe Routes to School program actually goes through a solicitation through our central office. So you're competing on a statewide basis. So TA program is definitely the program I would pursue.
Yeah.
Just gonna have an asphalt sidewalk.
I'm good with that.
Or a concrete trail.
Or a concrete trail, either.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I do have a question about County Road 49. We're showing this next phase from 252 to US 90. There is a section south of 252 as well. Are we gonna be able to incorporate that into that project? Because that first phase didn't make it all the way to 252 from the south end.
I would, I would develop a formal request and send it my way, and let us take that into consideration. Knowing it's in an outer year, we can, especially if we can pursue the opportunities we've discussed about, you know, additional allocations for these programs, that definitely create a remedy for us.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chairman, one more question. When we were at legislative meeting, update last couple weeks ago, said something about, DOT said something about the, there's some money that's being sent to, and I guess it's in this kind of a lump sum additional bit of money coming into scrap and scop. Is that correct? And how are you gonna allocate, or how are you gonna look at spending that? Are you gonna spend it somewhere else besides us?
Well, to give you the, to give you the full story of that additional allocation that legislature set aside, it's, it was related to the Hurricane Michael impact area. So it's really more, the applicability is more for our coastal zone. As part of the additional allocation, they also increased the population count for eligibility in these programs. So it added three or four counties in the panhandle. So if you take the money that additional allocation divided out, it did create a little bit of opportunity in our region, but not enough to really add new projects per se. And it's only a two-year allocation, so I would continue to lobby for beyond that, just knowing the focus was for those hurricane devastated areas.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Directors?
Well, I don't see, I believe there's two roads that I think you guys have approved should start soon, 139th and 85th?
I'm not as, are they, are they current year, Giles, Mr. Harris?
That was to start the end of this year, first of next year, if I'm not mistaken.
That money will be here, this, the road beyond our office.
And down back to Mitchell.
On over to the west and then north back to Mitchell.
Right.
It's on the previous list.
Okay.
The prior five year.
Yeah. Okay, gotcha.
It's probably, it's current year. This is only showing the.
Moving forward.
Yeah, July 1st, moving forward of next year, so. And if at any point in time, the commission want to break out equity report, looking historically, or even seeing the specific allocators, or if there are any questions, you can definitely ask me for that, and I can provide any level of detail you'd like to see.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Directors, thank you for coming, sir.
Yep, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jim.
Item 15, presentation of proclamation proclaiming October 20th through 26th, 2019, as national friends of the library week in Swanee County. That's Betty Lawrence, Director's Library.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, community, thank you for the opportunity to present this. The 14th annual Friends, National Friends of the Library will be celebrated October 20th through the 26th. It's really hard for me to keep a straight face here, you know that, right? And we at the library would like to acknowledge them by presenting them with this proclamation. Since we're getting off track, Commissioner Richardson, I have a database at the library that would teach you how to talk like a pirate.
All right, thank you, matey.
Okay, gotcha. And so we are requesting that the board will endorse this, sign it, and allow us to present it to them next week or at our staff development day.
All right.
Would you like to read it, or?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read it.
Okay, thank you.
National Friends of the Library Week Proclamation, where as Swanee County Friends of the Library raise money that enables the Swanee River Regional Library System to move from great to temporary, providing the resources of additional programming, much-needed equipment, and support for children's summer reading programs, special events throughout the year. Whereas the work from the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of our community, providing opportunities for all to engage and enjoy lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of a well-funded library and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print, electronic material, along with assistance in research, readers advisories, and children's services. Whereas the Friends gift their time and commitment to the library to set examples for all in how volunteerism leads positive civic engagement and betterment for our community. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners proclaim October 20th through 26th, 2019, as Friends of the Library Week in Swanee County, and urge everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better, passed and adopted on this day by the Board of County Commissioners. I will tell you, we've been to the book sale three times this week, and my, I think say nine-year-old, which turned 10 Sunday, probably just became your youngest Friends of the Library.
I understand that. I received a report today, so yes, she is the youngest one, so.
She was excited, and she'll probably be up there at the end of this week helping them with the book sale, that she was ready to get working.
Great.
So do I have a motion to approve? Motion. I'll go with Richardson, I think, and then who was the second? Did you miss Stapleton? I heard two, so I'm second. Got a second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
I didn't know that, Mr. Clean.
Yeah.
Is he not spot on with that? I'm telling you.
He is. Thank you all.
All right, moving on to staff reports. Eddie Head, Intermodal Public Safety Director. Did we vote? I don't know. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign there. If we didn't, we voted. Did we?
Chairman, Commissioners, that's awesome, by the way. I know this is my first staff report. I've learned very quickly in the meetings that I've been at that you like it short and sweet, not to take super long time. So I'll just give you a little report of what's going on with us. We just finished up our fiscal year, which shows, you know, we run our call load on the fiscal year instead of calendar year. We broke 10,000 calls this year for the county for the first time ever. So we're getting busier and busier. We've got quite a few station renovations going on. We're getting ready to move the fence on the west side of the station out 250 feet and give us twice as much property as we have now, which will also give us room to build the training room we were talking about in budget time, the pole barn to put the reserve apparatus under, and also for future use down the road, you know, a training area to put in behind the training building. We just are still continuing this week, but last week was Fire Prevention Week. We have reached right at 2,000 kids over the last week and a half with all of the schools that we visited. We had our staff out with Paw Patrol, teaching them about not to be afraid of a fireman, what to do in case of a fire, what to do in case their clothes catches on fire, all of the, all of the great fire prevention things that we teach every year. We've got a couple more to finish up this week, and we'll have reached just about every school and daycare and anything that has small children headed. All, we've been in Dallin Park, we've been in, we're headed to the VOTAC on Friday, so we're catching all of the, all of the young kids. And one last thing, I would really like to give some recognition to one of our staff members. One day last week at the primary school, when we were doing fire prevention, and he had no idea that his picture was being taken. But we had a young girl that is visually impaired, and she was not engaging in the, in the presentation when he was showing the kids around the truck, realized that she was blind, and took it upon himself that he knows that, you know, those folks can touch things and kind of, and learn and feel by their touch and get a vision in their head of what they're doing. So he took her by himself, went over, pulled the hose off the truck, actually was letting her, you know, feel everything. Her mother said that when she got home, that's all she could talk about. He had no idea that anybody was taking his picture or even watching him do it. And the school board posted it on their, or the primary school posted it on their Facebook page. And it hit like 6,000 likes and shares, between likes and shares in, within just a few days. One day, I think it was Friday last week, I got a call from the principal, and there was an NBC affiliate out of Atlanta, 11 Alive, picked the story up, and they ran, ran a story on it on their news channel and on their website. And 100,000 people have seen that now, with a positive impact with Swanee County and how, and every comment on it is just amazing. And that person's Chip, he's one of our captains, it's Chip Leafling. He's a perfect example of what we have on staff out there. He's a great leader, and I just wanted to make sure he was recognized for that act of kindness, because it made that little girl's day. You guys have any questions for me?
I don't have any. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to general business. Item 17, discuss with possible board action purchase of a water truck for the road department. The chairs?
I guess it'll be okay if I don't have to look at you. I won't have to bust up laughing. It's just difficult. I recognize now that, Mr. Chairman, that Rogaine actually works. It's very becoming on you.
Works well.
All right, item number 17 has to do with a water truck that we had budgeted during budget workshops. We set aside $100,000 for that purpose. We started inquiring, as we informed you in your packet, a new truck cost $198,000. We found a used one, but the used truck is $110,000. And they offered a lease program, but if we go with the lease, it's gonna end up costing us $117, a little over $117,000. So what I would request is that you let us go ahead and buy it for the $110. We now have the tire changing equipment that we had budgeted for. We saved about $10,000 on that, and that will cover this expense without having to affect any other lines in your budgets.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
What year is this, this truck, the used one?
2017.
Is this larger of the tanks?
Yes.
So this is the bigger one?
This is what we need. That's correct.
Will it be primarily used in District 1?
Mr. Clean said he's tired of the dusty loads, and he needs you to put some water on them.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by, crap, I can't even think of your name now, Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Item 18, discuss with possible board action, requirement that utility companies install reflective markers at all pedestals and equipment in the county right-of-way.
This is something that Mr. Bravat and I will likely bring back to you. We've been discussing this, but we've got a problem. We allow utilities companies to utilize our right-of-way for installation of their equipment and lines, and then they expect us to pay them when we run over a pedestal that wasn't delineated with any type of reflective material or anything. It happens every year. I think the most recent one that we had to pay for was $4,000, so I think it's time for them to step up and start going out and putting some markers up where we can see these things. So this really was just for the purposes of some brief discussion, and Mr. Bravat and I'll bring this back to you very soon. But it's an annual problem. Every year, we're dealing with this.
Yeah, the problem seems to be, though, they don't maintain any of the weeds around it, and they can't see it when they're mowing.
They don't maintain anything. They put them in and then walk away, and we're left with it.
Yeah. Well, I'm in favor of y'all working on a solution. Anyone else got anything to add? I agree with you. All right, sir. Moving on to item 19, discuss with possible board action, limited access and parcel access agreement, US 129 and I-10 north, or north, 129 north of I-10. The chairs?
Mr. Bravat and I don't have an agreement yet. We just want to go ahead and bring it to the board's attention. We have a proposed site plan that's been submitted from the company that plans to develop a piece of property across from Busy Bee on 129. When we had the public hearing on that, I think all of the commissioners agreed, and we discussed some requirements up there for some type of parallel access or limited access that would allow us to control the traffic there. As we move forward, we know that's going to continue to develop. So Mr. Bravat and I have talked about that. We've been trying to contact the owner of the parent parcel, because this was a carve-out, that piece that's gonna be developed the soonest. So we're gonna have a conversation with them and put a proposal together, and we'll bring that back to the commissioners when we get that completed. But I did want you to know that that proposed site plan has been submitted. We have that, and we don't have any plans of approving that site plan until we have an agreement in hand that we can bring back to the board for consideration.
He's not here still. I wish he was, but DOT, didn't they put some requirements on them on how that ingress egress was gonna go? Or do you know?
The only thing I know is that there's supposed to be some type of controlled access out there. But when I spoke to Mr. Pittman, because I'm looking at not just that proposal, but that entire stretch, there's about a half-mile separation requirement from traffic lights. So I'm trying to incorporate what we know is going to occur with traffic lights at the interchange itself, and then move on to the north. And when you go north, it actually goes beyond this specific piece of property. When Commissioner Hale and I met over there, and Mr. Pittman was with us at DOT a few weeks ago, and had some brief conversation at that time, the message that came from that meeting was it's a county issue. We've got to make a decision on how we want that to develop, and then DOT, I think, will help us reach our goals. So I think it needs to start with Mr. Bravat and I meeting with the owner, like I said, of the parent parcel, and then try to come to an agreement. Because in reality, a service road needs to be constructed on that parcel going north until it reaches the point where a traffic light should be, which is actually up closer to Mr. Hill's auction. So it needs to go up that far. If you otherwise have a lot. If you otherwise have a lot, just unlimited, access on both sides of the road throughout there, as that continues to develop, it's just going to compound all of the problems that we currently have there with traffic.
All right, do you know when y'all are supposed to meet with them? Are you?
Well, we're trying to set a time, but Mr. Bravat hasn't been able to make contact with him yet.
And after we talked this afternoon, I got an email.
Really?
Yes, but then I called it right back and still didn't get him, so we still have not made contact.
But that's the plan. Particularly, though, I wanted you to be informed that we have received that proposed site plan. In case you get contacted about it, it's kind of on hold until we can reach them and come up with a proposed agreement to bring back to you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Harris?
For Mr. Bravat?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to item 20, discuss with possible board action, any issues associated with water or wastewater plant, I-75, 136.
I don't have anything to report on that right now, Mr. Chairman. In fact, let me just go ahead and ask. I've done this before. The board has agreed that when we have budgeted items, that I don't have to come get permission to advertise for bids, but we're going to, as soon as all of these regulating agencies sign off and our designs are completed on the different pieces of the, those plants up there, water plant and sewer plant, we're going to be prepared to bid, and I'll go ahead and proceed with bidding, advertising and bidding those things. The well drillers up there working on putting in the well, but he will not construct the water plant, so we'll be bidding the water plant, and separately, we'll bid the sewer plant, and then I'll plan on bidding the lines, the underground lines, as a separate bid, because a lot of your underground utility contractors aren't interested in building those plants. So, we'll bid that separately. That's the plan right now.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing. At the safety meeting today, they did discuss the, the request that was sent up from you and Mr. Harris about the proactive looking with Commissioner, no. I was talking about Doctor Who over there, and the, and they did say they would be looking at this thing on a proactive basis like we are, just trying to stay in front of it on the bridge and on the road with that overpass out there, try to stay ahead of it so that we don't really get too far behind on any kind of construction.
I would anticipate probably a 10-year timeframe if they started today realistically on that.
Probably so.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Which project, what was Commissioner Richardson talking about?
There was a request sent up to...
You're talking about I-75?
I-75 and 136, overpass and that whole area out there.
You were starting to get excited, weren't you?
I was thinking, yeah, it's been about 10 years. Going to call, make another appointment tomorrow.
All right. We have any additional agenda item? I didn't see any.
No, sir.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll open it to public comment and concerns. Anyone wishing to speak, they'll make their way to the podium. Name and address for the record, please.
Hurriedly make your way to the podium.
That was a same-day invitation, Mr. Coke.
That was high-speed, right?
Excuse me, you know, five of you, I can understand, but the most scariest thing in here is the guy that is impersonating an attorney right there in that costume.
That's right.
Very accurate costume, Mr. Bravat.
Thank you.
You're welcome. John Coke, 1805, 289th Road. I'm back here on the census thing. I failed, the census is very important, and I failed to do what I really came up here to do last week, and that is, for the record, to mention Jennifer Payne, the 911 addressing lady. Without her help, I would not have been able to get as many houses as I did, particularly when I encountered sections of houses where I couldn't get to without violating property. But she helped me figure out at least 50 to 60 housing units that I would not have had any ability to get without violating the law to get them, and I probably would have done it anyways because it's that important. And also in private roads, lanes, passes, paths, you know, a lot of those were difficult. So, my thanks goes out to Jennifer Payne, and I want that into the official record that she was very helpful in assisting the United States Census and getting that information. Gosh, you're ugly, Mr. Chairman.
I was ugly before I put it on, so nothing's much changed, sir.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Thank you.
I got a question for Mr. Coke real quick.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Stapleton, Commissioner.
Out of all the traveling you did, how many negative folks did you run into? I'm talking about that was just not happy to see you at all.
One where I was assaulted, and one lady, God love her, I am under obligation, if I see a path or something that goes to, I'm to investigate it, and I was doing that, and she was very adamant that I do not do that. Well, I didn't know anybody was at home at the time because there was no cars around and no indication, and her husband was, you know, very apologetic, and she looked at him, so. And then there were two others that were hostile until I explained exactly what I was doing, so four. However, the crunch is going to come out when people, like anybody, maybe you, Mr. Stapleton, won't turn in that form. There is where the rub is going to come in, and people are going to need to go out there, and that's where the sheriff is going to have to be on his toes, and I'm debating whether I really want to do that in this environment today. I'm not allowed to bring any protection whatsoever, but there's nobody going to be out there to protect me, so that's going to create a moral dilemma for me if I was to do this.
You're a smart man. I just wouldn't go to those four.
Well, I got to go to all of them, you know, I got to go wherever I'm sent, so, but, no, very few, and a lot of the people, once I realized were very helpful or, you know, did ask questions, and I was able to perform the services. But as I said, the rub is going to be when we have to return to pick up those forms of those who did not fill them out.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
How many people like yourself are out there at this moment?
Well, you know, in our little group, we had nine listers. I know that they had training classes for four more after us, so, you know, once I told them that, you know, I don't mind going outside into Hamilton or Lafayette, but don't send me where they tried to start, in Gaston or Tallahassee, where I need to come here and save us all money. You know, I know the roads, I know the people, you know, I went through the 5th district for the 5th time, you know. So, I know that there was at least four people working at the county. There could have possibly been more. I know I did Branford.
Okay.
And the 5th district.
When you get in District 1, let me know. I'll let you know where the dogs are that bite and the people that shoot.
Well, thank you, sir.
I've met them all.
Thank you. You'll meet them again, too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coke, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
When are y'all cutoff date that other, the other people start going out to the houses?
I think that'll probably be sometime in, sometime between February and April. At this point, you know, Phase 2, I'm no longer technically a member of the census because we've ended that phase, and I've turned in my badge and equipment. However, I can be called back and probably will be called back first because we were victims, I mean suckers, I mean, you know, volunteers to take over the job, so they'll come and ask us first.
Okay.
So, but I can keep you informed, Commissioner.
Please, please do, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak? No one? All right, this time. Mr. Harris, do you have any administrative remarks you want to make, sir?
Actually, what I was thinking a moment ago when Mr. Coke was talking, that if you go back, did you see the movie Apocalypse Now, when they were coming down on the beach in the choppers and had the loudspeakers playing? That's what I would try to employ if you go back to try to find those people. Let's get you some loudspeakers and play that soundtrack. That's all I had.
Okay. Going on to Commissioner comments, Mr. Richardson, you have anything for us?
Hold on. Oh, well, there we go.
Got to play in the economic development director.
He's going to complain because he got left out.
I did get kind of left out, and since I am the...
You got to dance.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Can we find him or something?
Oh, my.
I agree, can you look the other way? It's just killing me. But I do, I do want to thank Mr. Coke for helping us, and of course, Jamie with the paper. We put an article in there last week to kind of let them know these guys were out there, and please be kind to them, and it's very important, and we're kind of coming to the end of that phase, but to Mr. Fleming's question, kind of how that's going to work is, you'll see a big push starting in January as far as getting the word out, and each and every one of you will be imported in that. April 1st is kind of the official day of taking the census. You can do that, again, as we mentioned, by phone, you can do it on your computer, and if, the emphasis will be on that for the first couple of months. Then you would be mail day form midsummer. That's your, kind of your third option to fill that out. If you don't do it, then, starting the end of the summer, July and August, is when you're going to see people starting to come up and knock on your door. So, the big push is going to be trying to get them to do that, so these guys don't have to go out into the field. So, the more we can get to sign up initially, it'll keep those guys. And yes, we did get some calls about the guy dressed in the military stuff that they think he's the guy that reports on all the people at death row, but they're not sure, and can we help out with that? So, we verified that he's one of our teams, so.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, if the count is not accurate, or if they feel it's not accurate, everybody's not being reached, so John, they might have to go back. Do they have to, do they have to come back?
Well, there's, we have an opportunity, a window, to get the count correct, and then the count is what it is. So, if they get missed, for instance, we're at 70% is where they have us now, 30% of us have not been counted. We just have to live with that for the next 10 years. That's why the push is so important up front to less increase that number, because 10 years is a long time to...
Yes, it is.
We're talking millions of dollars for the community that will get missed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When will you, or have you already started a advertising campaign?
That is in the works right now. We actually, our next meeting is tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. Anybody is certainly welcome to come attend that meeting. This will be the 3rd meeting of that committee, and we are in the process of deciding exactly how we're marketing, where we're marketing, you know, pinpointing certain events. We have to identify the areas that are getting missed, and so, it's not necessarily, the marketing may not necessarily be for certain sectors, it's going to be kind of targeted, but, yeah, tomorrow will be a big day. If you're in town, you'll come by for that meeting.
Mr. Hale?
Seriously, if anybody wants...
Why don't you get with Mr. Norris, and y'all clean that up?
Well, it sounds like, that's why I brought this. I come to clean all this up down here.
You're going to need more than that.
That's right.
So, but, definitely working on that, and really the first of the year.
There's going to be more boots on the ground, then, basically, because y'all are going to have to go out there and knock on some more doors, then.
Well, that's, it's not really that committee's job to do that. We're just supposed to get the word out that it's happening, so, starting in January is when you'll see the marketing piece. You kind of, they want to kind of get through the holidays, and then, starting in January, January, February, March, you'll see a big push. We'll be at the events, we'll be through the community.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
I just wanted to let you know, at least 92% of the households' addresses were found, identified, and confirmed.
That's good.
That's awesome.
Good, thank you.
That's the percent.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to say that I'm the one that volunteered, Mr. Norris, to serve on that committee. They came to see me and...
Yeah, I know, I heard about it.
Sounded like it was going to take a lot of time.
We all did.
For his initiation, we signed him up to serve in that capacity for us, but I know we're well represented over there.
He's good for 10 years, then.
Yeah, that's right.
Are there anyone else wishing to speak? Not, we'll go on to Commissioner comments, Mr. Richardson.
I just want to say thank you to you guys for not leaving me out to be the only one coming dressed up. I come here earlier tonight and saw Commissioner Gamble get out of his truck, and just about turned around and went home, because he was in his regular clothes.
I didn't have my jacket or my mask on, and he was freaking out.
Some of the things that I was, how I was treated in school, I guess, goes back. Flashbacks, but I wanted to give a shout out to Branford. I chose this because of Branford Buccaneers, and that's why I put the blue and the orange on, and their homecoming's coming up in November 1st, and want to wish them the best and hopefully be there and be in that parade. I know, I'm not going to dress like this in the parade.
You should. Mr. Fleming, you got anything for us?
I just want to congratulate Commissioner Hale for calling me and informing me, and then I talked with Commissioner Richardson, and I said, "You dressing up?" He said, "Oh, yeah." He told me what he was going to be doing, and I was a little reluctant. I said, "I don't know." But my wife, she's here tonight, we were looking and shopping, and she kind of said, "Well, that'd be all right, right there," and I said, "You sure?" But I just want to say thanks to her, she's here tonight, and dressing up like this. I'm not a surgeon.
But you stayed in a Holiday Inn Express last night. That's why I chose a mask I could take off and a coat I could take off, because I was not getting set up, show up. I appreciate y'all doing it, and I appreciate y'all letting the art come out and be a part of it. That meant a lot to them, they had a good time. Other than that, I don't have anything. Mr. Hale, you got anything?
Yeah, I would like to say thank you to the community. A week or so, well, almost a week ago, I lost my father-in-law, and pretty much everyone in here has reached out to me. The board was very kind to me. My family appreciates that, we all do. I also understand Mr. Stapleton's got a loved one that's not doing well, so we want to keep that person our thoughts and prayers, and I do want to thank this board for, you know, I come up with this crazy idea for us to do this, and congratulations to ARC for winning their award, and it was just a great fit, and I appreciate you guys participating and, you know, just doing something fun for our community, but also handling the business at hand, so, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Mr. Stapleton?
Dr. Gamble, I feel like I've got some explaining to do. Oh, I think a couple people got the wrong idea when I come in the door. You got to read a man's name tag to understand what it really is. But, no, I just, if anybody didn't see it, it says Alvin Jimmy Stapleton. So, Swan County Economic Development Director. So, my idea was, is I always liked how you got to dress for success. Now, Mr. Jackson had that covered, so I took that part, and with Mr. Norris, he's got a love for this community, he's doing great things, and I figured I'd just combine the two and make a hybrid. So, Mr. Norris is going to have to step his game up on his dressing attire as we move forward.
Give him that hat.
But, one thing I was going to say is, that pirate down there, his feet's got to be sore, because it's a long way to any water. And the next thing I got is from Mr. Harris, because we all know how smart he is, but I would like to get him to recite the Gettysburg Address, because that's Abraham Lincoln right there.
Fore-scoring seven years ago.
But, and Dr. Gamble, I don't need any attention from you, so if I need any medical help while we're here, I'd like to have Mr. Fleming work on me. I feel like I'd be in good hands. But, no, it's a good time. Appreciate everybody, and appreciate the art and everything they've done and what they continue to do for this community. The only other thing I didn't say is breast cancer awareness. I did have my little thing. I think about all these people that affects throughout this whole country, not just this county. A lot of folks, and they're all on our prayers. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. No one else has anything? I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Fleming. In all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that was.